This meeting of the Gazzin City Council will now come to order and the chair calls on City Clerk Iba Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed. We have a quorum present, our meeting is open for business, and I'd like to ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this wonderful opportunity to come before you, Father. We thank you for the great responsibility and the great duty that you called us to, Father. And we ask that you would continue to bless us, Father, continue to touch us, and grant us the wisdom that we need to make sound decisions, decisions both rooted in reason, good reason, and love, Father. And through it all, Father, we thank you, Father, for being here for this great city, for loving this great city, and covering this great city. For these and many other things, we ask in your son Jesus' name and for his sake.
Amen.
Amen. I pray to the Jesus who is born of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee meeting on February the 27th in the work session and the city council meeting is held on March the 4th. So move. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of February the 28th through March the 6th and March the 7th through 13th.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts for both weeks.
I don't see anybody from the mayor's office. Unfinished business, we have none today. Number nine, this is time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving the permit for Advantage Emergency Medical Service LLC. Doing business as Advantage EMS to operate an ambulance service in the city. It also authorizes a police chief to issue a certificate of public necessity and convenience. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk?
Hold, hold, hold. That's a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars?
Yeah. He says you the chairman and you didn't turn yours off. It's fifty dollars for everybody else. But you had a question.
Oh, gosh.
My question, Mr. President, is I wasn't sure if we have a contract. I didn't hear that discussed. Do we have a contract with, or did we have a contract with the old service provider before?
You're asking me?
Chief?
Yeah, or just in general.
I think we should refer to that.
Chief can answer that question.
The chief?
We had a memorandum of understanding on dealing with the ambulance system that gives the 911 calls for us. The transfers, you know, it's not getting regulated so much other than what their duties are, you know, that ours is not necessarily contracted or in place where we have two kinds of services in there at different times and we find their responsibilities in no way.
So?
Did not have a contract, did you know?
So I want to be clear, my question is not so much rooted in criticism as it is just due diligence. I want to make sure that there aren't any advantages that can be gained through us considering engaging these service providers in a contract. So, just something to think about, Lee, going forward. If there's some benefit in us having a contract, I think it'd be worth looking at that.
Is there any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Ten is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Junior Golf Association. This is for the city to sponsor youth activities of the Gazzin Junior Golf Association from March through August of 2014, and the amount is forty-five hundred dollars. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I think all the questions was answered upstairs as to them using city-owned facilities.
Yeah.
Of the four events, we will be involved in all four, Twin Bridges will be involved in all four events that the Gazzin Junior Golf Association sponsors.
I'd like to commend Larry Oliver for heading up this program. He does a good job with the children, and that's what it's all about.
Is there any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eleven is a resolution authorizing third amended amendment to Tino Tower Attachment Lease Agreement. This is for modification to the equipment located on property at 909 Bellevue Drive. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mayor, did you have anything you want to?
No proclamation, but I'm doing my part.
New businesses are in new business.
Yes, Mr. President, I do have one item. This is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property to Quality of Life Health Services. I'd like to ask that we consider this today.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have a unanimous vote for consideration today.
Move for passage.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I think we talked about this some time ago, but right now, the MLK building in District Three, actually, is not being utilized at any level, and the city at some level is still responsible for maintenance and upkeep. So, one of the ideas that was presented, and I thought it was a great recommendation, is that we allow one of our very prominent corporate sponsors to take over ownership of that building and then do something with it. So, I didn't know if now was the good time for it, to have Mr. Rowe to come up and actually speak to that.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah.
May I state your name and address, please?
My name is Wayne Rowe, CEO for Quality of Life Health Services, 141 P. Bop Cut Off in East Gaston. Thank you for the opportunity to come and say a few words, and I want to thank this council, the mayor, city attorney, and Kent Hensley.
For working with this project in terms of transferring that property to Quality of Life Health Services. I know we have spent quite a bit of time getting to this point, and I want to thank all of you. In terms of your trust in Quality of Life Health Services to make a difference in the community, in which we pledged to do that, to make a difference in a positive way, to impact the lives of individuals of the Gaston and surrounding areas. And I can't tell you exactly the total use of that facility for the future, but we certainly will keep you informed on our plans and the development going forward. And all the things that Quality of Life has represented down through the years, our company is now thirty-eight years old, and I've been there thirty-two of those thirty-eight, and we have never really gone backwards. We always have moved forward, never had a deficit. One year we got down to thirteen dollars. But we didn't have a deficit. And so, we look forward to really going forward in a very positive way, and we'll keep you informed, and we certainly will ask you to help us in the way to come with the plans and development. And we'd like to have the continued involvement of the city council and the mayor's office in the work that we plan to do, and certainly look forward to making a difference in our community. Thank you. Mr. Rowe, I understand, I got two things, that the, whatever you put in, the name will still stay with the building? That is certainly one of the conditions, and certainly it will remain. Okay, and the second one is, at the end of whatever period that might be, ten years, fifty years from now, that the city will have first right of refusal to get the building back if you guys decide fifty years from now you're going to do something else? Well, you know fifty years from now, you and I both will be gone. But that certainly will- Speak for yourself. That will be passed on and certainly be a part of the record. Yes, speak for yourself, I plan on being. I know. But I just want to make sure that that's part of the record, honestly.
And Mr. Rowe, and thank you again, you know, this has been in the plans for quite several years. I'm really glad to see this program come to fruition. My understanding, and of course, the conversation that we had in the past, was that this, the building would be a multi-use, basically, for activities for seniors, youth, and children, wellness, and everything else.
Absolutely.
So that is-
Whole life cycle.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you, and I just want everybody to be aware of the fact that we're looking forward to some big and great things happening over there at the old MLK building. Thank you, Mr. Rowe, and Quality of Life.
Yeah, I want to thank you too, and your board, and all your employees. The last time I had spoken with him, I thought he had seventeen clinics. I believe you told me it's up to twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
In north-central east Alabama, I guess you'd say, is that correct?
Yes, sir, we cover eighteen counties and about twenty-six percent of the total geographical area of the state.
Right. Well, this Quality of Life has a big impact on the good health care that we get here in Etowah County and all the other places as well, but we appreciate you moving forward. It's going to be another good project in the neighborhood.
Yes, sir, and I'd just like to recognize my staff that's here, planning and development officer, Ms. Amelia Warford, and then my operations director, Ms. Run the Terror, and then my outreach officer, Ms., what's your name, Chappelle Benson. And then my marketing and public relations director, Jonathan Sram, and certainly Kent Hensley, our attorney.
Just, Mr. President, just one final point as it relates to this. One of the things that makes this a meaningful partnership is that it involves a corporate partner who has some sustainability elements. You know, this is not something that the city will have to look at, you know, next year and the year after that. So that's a huge benefit, and we, again, really appreciate Quality of Life being a top-tier corporate partner in our community.
Say that word again, what kind of, what is it? Corporation?
Deep pocket.
It's a partner.
Partnership.
It's a partnership, which we don't have from a lot of our corporations in this city. One of these days, they're going to realize the importance of partnering with the city of Gaston to help benefit our city, our children, and our economic base. I mean, we've got these major corporations here, and they don't do anything towards building our, let me get off my horse. They know, they know who they are, they know what they're not doing, and that's the end of the conversation.
I don't know what we'd do without them, whether they'd do anything or not. They pay an awful lot of people that are good living, so.
Bob, I had no idea in 1994, when I came in 305, room 305, and Wayne was in there saying what they were going to do and how they were going to do it, and I'm sitting over there brand-new, and I'm the council thinking, man, ain't no way you're going to do that. What'd you have, three or four employees, you knew every one of them, you've got a set here that's unbelievable. And when you look around at what they've done and what they do, David, all peoples, all peoples that they service, it's unbelievable how far they've come. And it just proves that he's got all the vision and I didn't get none of it. Absolutely. But Wayne, I'm proud of you anyway, I guarantee, and I still want that free flu shot. I do. Okay. I'm lined up, man.
He may not want to admit it publicly, but he put food on my table early on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's done that for a lot of folks, I guarantee you.
Maybe one of us can give him that flu shot.
Not after this morning, you ain't touching me.
Dude, call for the vote. It's getting deep.
And we voted on that?
Not yet.
No, we tried.
I just called for it.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business? Department reports, committee, boards, our units. Remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor, you want to start?
Yeah, I'm going to go podium, I got some.
I'm going to go down to the podium too when I do that. I'm going to go down to the podium too. I got a commercial.
We've got a financial report here from Ms. Ross, and if I misread this, Ms. Ross, don't say anything. This is the first financial report we've issued in 2014 on our budget year, and, you know, it's, in a lot of places, things are bad, but we still sort of keep inching up and doing what we need to do, thanks to the council and all our employees. This report indicates a total revenue collections through February, net of transfers of twenty-three million, four-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars. It's an overall increase of 2.3 percent, or five-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. The most significant increases are in sales tax and occupational license fees, which account for seventy-two percent of our general fund revenue tax base. Sales tax collections were eight-point-two-three million, which is an increase of 1.8 percent, or a hundred-and-forty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars for fiscal year thirteen. Occupational license fees were five-point-seven-eight million, it's an increase of 4.4 percent, or two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars. You know, and that could change from month to month, depending on sometime when everybody sends a million, so it could be up right now, but it could be down a little, but it's still positive. The other two major revenues were also up. Averlorum taxes, one-point-eight million, which is business license, is up 1.6 percent. They were at five million, sixty-seven thousand dollars, up 1.4 percent. Other than less significant general fund revenues are gasoline tax up 5.6 percent, beer tax down minus 5 percent, wine and liquor tax up 2.3 percent, and municipal court fines up 17.2 percent. And looking at these expenses, we're thirty-eight percent of a forty-one percent budget at the end of February. This represents us being under budget by 3.4 percent. Expenses have increased as time, as this time last year, we were under budget by 4.9 percent. Personnel costs are 38.9 percent, under budget by 2.8. Operating costs are 36 percent, under budget by 5 percent. In comparison to February 2013, personnel costs were 4.6, under budget, and operating costs were 5.2. So we're working, and we're still financially sound. Takes about a million and a half to pay the bills each month, and we like to try to keep three months in reserve, which we have done that, and there's been times when we needed it. One other thing I do want to say, and I don't usually say this, about Facebook, I don't know really how to even get on it, but people send me stuff from time to time, and it seems like there's somebody, or a few people, who want to do a bad PR, especially in police and a few other things. So I'm going to point out some things that we've done in the past almost eight years. When we got in office, we had about eighty officers. We raised the starting pay for a new officer, and we allowed certified officers from other departments to transfer in, to get more officers on deck. Now we actually have, I think, about a hundred and three, and maybe a couple that's in the Also, on sick days, the officers on patrol, they only work twelve hours, a shift, not only, but they do work twelve hours per shift. But if they took a day off, sick day, or were sick, then they only got paid for eight, so we changed that to twelve. We got the latest technology, we got computers in the cars, body cameras, new communication system, the vest, and we buy as many new cars and new fire trucks as we can each year. We have approximately a hundred and three officers now, and they're well-equipped, well-trained, as is our fire department. We have a new fire hall out at the airport, sometime we have to rotate it around a little bit because we had several people retire when we took the buyout, but we hadn't had it up until the last couple of years. And we have a training center, which other cities pay us to come use our training. We're opening a new police precinct and moving city court over to the old Weaver Tech Building in East Gaston, across from Johnson Shopping Center. And, you know, since we've been in office, me and this group of guys here, it's the worst recession since the thirties, late twenties. We've had no layoffs, we've had no cut in services, we've had about three-hundred-and-fifty million plus or minus in capital improvements for jobs, and it's also, we've had an investment which brought about adding or saving around four thousand jobs, and it's probably more than that, these are about six months old, the figures. And we've had ninety-eight new small businesses opened up. If you haven't been downtown, you know, very few downtowns nowadays have as many local people that are running things. So, instead of Facebook gossip, like I said, we've given the seven races the past eight years, our health insurance cost has gone up on employees only three times since 92. We put a cap on it now where they only have to pay 20 percent, and that's mandated by the state. And we're paying about 20 percent into the retirement fund for everybody, and that's a lot, but I'm glad we got the money to pay it. So, a few of those on Facebook who say we don't have enough police and we don't have a safe city and all, they must have been in a coma the last eight years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've only got two things today. Once again, thank you, Mr. Rowe, for Quality of Life, and for you all undertaking the task that you're going to undertake over at the MLK building, we appreciate it. Litchfield Middle School, I promised you that I will keep that in front of you every chance I get, for you to get involved in that school to bring it to the next level, regardless of what publicity that has been generated about failing schools and things like that. Litchfield Middle School is still a wonderful school in our school system, and we need to rally behind it to make sure that we continue to make the progress at that school that has been made over the past few years. Please support Litchfield Middle School. You don't have to be, you don't have to have children there, you don't have to have grandchildren there. If you are a part of the city of Gaston, then you should be privileged to help Litchfield get to the next level. And the other thing that I have is that, for those of you who thought that we may have been having a meeting last night in District One, we didn't have one, but we will have one next Monday night at 6:00 at East Gaston Recreation Center, and our guest of honor will be Mike Hilton, so y'all come prepared. Thank you.
Garrett?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by apologizing to my mother about my tie being loosened, that she will give me an earful when I get home tonight, but I do want to apologize for that, it's just an oversight on my part. Or it could be attributed to the fact that finally, after all these years, I'm starting to gain a little weight, so, I don't know. That's the answer? Well, maybe a turban next will come back, I don't know.
Never they leave, my friend.
All right. I did want to announce District Two meeting for the East Gaston side of District Two. I have a unique dynamic, I'm one of the few districts that actually covers two separate sides of the river, and of course, we're having a meeting at the East Gaston Community Center at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, March 22nd. This meeting was primarily driven by some concerns that were raised by residents who live along Hood Avenue. But again, we'll have a full-blown district meeting, so again, we want to encourage people to come out, that's going to be Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m. at the East Gaston Community Center. Couple other quick items, as many of you know, we were all in DC last week. What you may not know is that about three years ago, I boycotted the DC trip because I was just so frustrated with the lack of responsiveness from a number of the elected officials there. But since then, I've gone back because I know that part of my job, and I realize that part of my job is to advocate, whether they're truly hearing me or not, you know, I have an opportunity to advocate it. And of course, some people struggle with why many of us participate on a national level on some of the committees and such. Well, you know, for those who've been critical of that, I want to be critical back, but for those who just didn't understand it, I want to kind of raise an element of education there. There are a number of national advocacy items that cities drive, and cities have to be involved in, and there are things that get handed down that are truly driven by some of that national advocacy. And when you serve on those committees, you get to dictate what that advocacy is, and you get to dictate what people are talking about, and what gets presented to those congressmen, and what they're talking about when they vote, and when they're drafting laws. So that's why it's important, that's why you've got folks like Councilman Reed, and Councilman Stewart, and Councilman Avery, and myself, who serve on some of those committees, because we get to drive what people are talking about. And I'm just going to give you a couple of examples of what we talk about. The transportation funding issues. If you've driven on any of our streets here recently, any of our highways, you know that that's a huge issue, not just in the city of Gaston, but throughout, throughout the country. There's cities all over this country who are struggling with a deficit in terms of funding for their transportation projects. And of course, if you've been watching the news here recently, you know that if Congress doesn't do anything, that in the late summer of this year, that the transportation fund will be insolvent, meaning that we won't be able to meet our obligations as it relates to transportation projects. So it's important, again, for cities to be involved in that, otherwise, you get what they give you, as opposed to being able to drive the discussion and drive the dialogue. Another thing is voting rights, you know, that's not an issue for everybody, but for some people, voting rights and what happened in terms of Section Five is a serious issue. And you've heard me say before, and I'll say again, the state of Alabama in particular lacks the cultural maturity to be without that oversight. So again, it's important for us to have that discussion. And the last thing is marketplace fairness. A lot of these things that we struggle with because we have the lack of funding, you know, and the mayor talked about the city of Gaston's financial situation, and I had somebody to tell me, you know, at a meeting once, that, you know, city's doing fine, you know, y'all got plenty of money. And my comment to that person was, I appreciate your feedback, but plenty is relative, and I think Lisa would definitely, what we have is what most of our personal budgets should have, and that is a rainy day opportunity. We have the ability to cushion ourselves to some degree if we get hit, like the city of Tuscaloosa did. So again, I mean, these are just a number of things. And marketplace fairness, again, is the internet tax that helps to level the playing field for some of our local businesses who are losing sales because people like me realize that it's a lot cheaper to go online and buy that stuff and not pay the tax, so that's what we do. And so again, there's a big opportunity, again, for us to be advocates. So if you hear somebody speaking up and telling you, I don't know why they're spending time on those committees nationally when we've got problems here, one part of what they're saying is right, we do have problems here, but the other part of what they're saying is totally misguided. We have a responsibility to be on those committees and drive the national dialogue as it relates to a lot of those things. So again, keep that in mind. And the last thing, Mr. President, I apologize for being a little bit long today, but the education focus as it relates to this city, you know, I want to compliment our mayor, since I've known him, he's been a staunch advocate of career tech, and he's been driving it, and he's putting his money where his mouth is as it relates to a number of the programs that we've developed. But even beyond that, folks, take it from somebody who's looked at this for the better part of twenty years from the industry side. The product that we're putting- The product that we're putting out in our schools right now is falling short, to some degree, of what industry and what employers need for tomorrow's economy. So, we have really got to work hard, and pretty much all we have here as council members is a bully pulpit, and that's fine, that's fine, you know, we understand that. But we've got to use that bully pulpit to some degree to help drive the dialogue, drive the discussion about what needs to be focused on in our city. And our kids have got to be better in participating in and producing results in science, technology, engineering, and math. That's what STEM stands for. So, when you go home today, folks, please drive that with your young children, your grandchildren, your nieces and nephews, because tomorrow's economy is gonna be driven by those things. That's all I have.
Mr. President, I have one announcement and two commercials. The announcement is that my district meeting will be this Thursday at five o'clock at the Carver Community Center, and we're asking all the people in District Three, or people around the city who wants to come out and meet with us this Thursday at five o'clock at the Carver Community Center. That's my announcement, now to my commercial. Mayor, I started going down where you were to make my commercial. Most of you may or may not know, back in August of last year, I appeared in Time Magazine, and I just discovered the other day that they've done a reprint, and there is a copy, or there is some copies of it in the mall at Books-A-Million. So, if you want to go down and see me in Time Magazine, please, ma'am, and please, sir, go down and get a copy of it. On the front of it, it has Civil Rights in America, The Road to Equality, and The Dream Today. So, Books-A-Million do have some copies of it, Dr. King pictures on there, along with several other pictures of the Capitol and everything, but I am in that magazine, so that's my commercial there. And my other announcement is, on this past Thursday, I was blessed with a great-grandbaby. Came in with eight pounds and eleven ounces. Just one. I got another one coming in May, so just stay tuned. But eight pounds, eleven ounces, and her name is Malia Nicole, so I'm proud of that. I'm through.
Congratulations.
No, thank you.
Actually, David covered everything that I had on my mind, so. I would like to commend our state delegation in Montgomery, they're working on a couple of bills that are very important to our area, and one of them is giving the citizens the right to vote on Sunday sales. They're moving that through the legislature very nicely, and we appreciate what they're doing. Another one is wind energy, that's very important to some of us in this area, that they're trying to draft some regulations to control that industry, so. Anyway, just so I want to say thanks to our delegation in Montgomery, they're doing a good job. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everybody, third weekend April, we're gonna kick off our concert at the gazebo. It'll be there every third Saturday, I'll go all the way through April, all the way through August. It'll be free food, free music, bring your lawn chairs, enjoy it. It starts about six o'clock, and it should end about ten every third Saturday, starting in April. I saw too, our next district meeting for people in South Gaston and Walnut Park area will be the fourth Tuesday of this month at five-thirty at Banks Activity Center. That's all I have.
Robert, I was sitting here thinking, I was gonna tell Johnny Grant to move out of that door, because I know as soon as it's over, all these people gonna rush out and buy that book. So, tell Johnny Grant to move out of the way back there, will you? Okay. He said he would, he said he would. Ambulance service, once again, I do want to say and thank Rural Metro, the job that they did when EMS had their problem and went down, because they covered this city in an elite way, and they are an elite corporation anyway, they know that. To Advantage coming in, I know they're gonna do the job, and they're gonna do a good job, because they've got something to look forward to at Rural Metro. And to Amed, I hear now, a tune that's gonna back us up, should give us all a real good feeling about being covered, regardless of what happens. Rural Metro's there, Advantage is there, and Amed's gonna back them up, so the citizens around here are pretty well-covered. The next thing is the free voter photo, Robert. Well, I got a copy of this.
Yeah.
And I know where y'all brought it, but I wanted to tell everybody that a free photo is gonna be available at the county board registrar's offices. This is very important for people who don't have an ID, and it's gonna be in every county in the state. Plus, they're gonna have a van that will be going around, and we've all read this, I'm sure, in all sixty-seven counties to pick that up also, so nobody should go without or be without a voter ID when they go to the polls to vote, and hopefully, everybody will go to the polls and vote. Yeah, Robert?
Not quite true, but-
I'm just reading what they said on-
Yeah, I know, but you have to qualify in order to get the free voter ID.
Well, good, I don't know what you have to do to get it.
You have to qualify, you have to prove that you don't have the money, number one, and there's a form you have to fill out, and that's good. Where the problem gonna come in is those individuals who can afford to pay, then the rules are totally different as far as getting a state-issued photo ID, and believe me, it's gonna be very, very hard, and you got to have three different pieces of ID in order to get a state-issued pictured ID. The voter's ID is only good for voting, and all you need, I think, is a birth certificate and a registered voter's card, where you actually voted, and/or you've registered. Then you can get that free one, providing your income doesn't live up to it.
Well, I'm glad I brought it up, get that straightened out. I got my driver's license a couple of weeks ago, I had to have my birth certificate, my DD two-fourteens from the military, I had to have a gas bill, electric bill to prove where I lived.
That's right.
And then I had to have a witness come along, it wasn't nobody born when I was born. You know, and the guy, it took me, honest to goodness, he's real nice, but it took me three trips out there to Glencoe through all them potholes and all that wading water to get to that place, to get my driver's license, but I got it. You know, I got it in the mail the other day.
But you're right.
Okay. Listen, on a serious note, Sergeant Gary Pierce was in a motorcycle accident downhill Rainbow Drive last Saturday, I believe. He's at UAB in Birmingham, and he's not in real good shape, I won't go into what all happened to him, but his family is down there at his side as we speak. It's expensive to be down there, and I would ask, and I'm gonna do this, that we go by, is it Wind South Credit Union, where they've set up the account down there for them? And me personally, I would appreciate anybody who can to drop by there and contribute to this, to keep their family near this police officer. Okay. Sorry.
Okay, I believe that we have just had the longest council meeting that we've had in the twenty-seven years I've been here.
But wasn't it fun?
We had an hour and fifteen minutes upstairs, and now we've had an hour down here, nearly an hour. So, but it's good to see this many people in this city, and what's happening in Gaston.
Yes.
Keep it up.
Love it.
Stay after us, don't let us get complacent in what we do. If there's not anything else, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So much.